This conference will now be recorded.
Well, I'll call a meeting to order, Dave. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson White? Yes. Ms. Mahoney? Yes. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did we have any questions of the approval of minutes from our last regular meeting on August 5? I motion to approve the minutes from August 5?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson White? Yes. Ms. Mahoney? Yes. And then any additions or deletions to the agenda? We've got a couple of the, a couple that are taken off, right, Oliver? We're taking off the zoning and we're taking off the executive session. So we've got the hearing of the public on any agenda items. Mr. Allen, are you here for an agenda item or not? Or non-agenda item? We'll have you in a few minutes?
Yeah.
No problem. We're going to get through our agenda here if we could.
It's an agenda item.
It is an agenda item. Okay, great. Would you like to come up and speak now or do you want to?
Sure.
Whatever's easiest for you. If you could, just maybe, if you could, just for the tape, introduce yourself, address.
I'm Doug Allen. I live at 6036 Real Drive in the little bend. Anyway, I'm here to speak about a problem we've been having for some time with people parking through mailboxes. So the mail person has to deliver the mail, has to like go around their aisle to come back to the mailbox.
Okay.
And what's happening is the person that's delivering the mail, she's like just trying to avoid, you know, the parked car. In fact, I have pictures of her driving around the car and we've spoken to the individual whose car it is and they continue to do it. We even had one of the officers talk to them and ask them, you know, don't park there. But I think what's needed is a sign that states that, you know, you can't park so many feet away. And I don't think there's anything in place right now to compel us, right? Not currently, right?
So. Sounds like you guys have had a chat already then, huh? Okay.
It's not the first time. I mean, this has been going on for some time.
Help me out here. Where's this parking space at? Is it like in the subdivision, in the middle of the subdivision? Is it just like just down a side street or?
No, no. It's on Scarlet Oak.
Scarlet Oak?
Scarlet Oak.
Okay.
That's where the mailbox is located.
Okay.
And before Scarlet Oak, on Black Oak, you come around the curve and it turns into Scarlet Oak. But on Black Oak, there was a sign on one of the mailboxes on the post that says, don't park because of, I don't know, I don't know what word it is on the sign. Yeah. And everybody pretty much adheres to that. But as you go around, you have to be so many feet or something. And I guess what we need is a sign erected to give people direction as to the parking.
I have a resolution on the agenda board that I.
Okay, fantastic. All right. Hang tight, Mr. Allen. Thanks for coming tonight, too.
Yes.
Appreciate it. Okay, so let's, we'll get back to number seven. We've got multiple on this. Eight this evening. I'll offer a resolution to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson White? Yes. Ms. Mahoney? Yes. And then Darryl, come on down for your zoning, please. Evening.
Good evening. I have one item in my statement. This is Resolution 25146. It is a authorization by legal action. The Department of three eight five zero Pepperwood Court. Regarding the zoning violation there, I had sent the board an email last week. Hopefully you had a chance to look at that.
Any questions from the board? I'll offer Resolution 25146 to enforce legal action Lucas County Police Courts.
A second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson White? Yes. Ms. Mahoney? Yes. Thanks, Darryl. And for Mr. Allen. Hi, Rob.
I think I've seen, I've heard you.
Oh, thanks.
So I did have a resolution trying to address the issue. I've had multiple conversations with the county chief, the chief regarding the same situation. The neighborhood is blind, the whole neighborhood, not just Scarlet Oak, Black Oak. All three streets have no parking signs on an area to cover one side of every street because there's an epidemic in that neighborhood of parking everywhere from in the road to halfway in the road, halfway in the yard. This particular one section that Mr. Allen is complaining about and is concerned about in the postal services complaining about is for some reason there's a sign missing and it's quite a big distance between the personal parking sign and the street sign. Currently, after assessing the situation, the power vice code four five one one point six eight is prohibit a lot of different parking restrictions. But in this particular case, there is no set in law distance from a mailbox that one can park. It doesn't call out a specific distance. It says reasonable distance. So what's a reasonable distance? If you're walking, a reasonable distance is I can reach it. If you're driving, which is particularly the postal carrier does, you maybe need 30 feet. I don't know. So the only resolution is to put the no parking sign out and that would basically mirror the rest of the neighborhood.
And you're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. I'll offer, any questions by the board? I'll offer Resolution 25147 to install no parking signs.
A second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson White? Yes. Ms. Mahoney? Yes. Thanks, Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
Chris, come on down. Hey, Mr. Allen, you're lucky to stick around. You're more than welcome to leave at any time, so.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Have a good one. Thanks for coming down.
Good evening, trustees, postal officers. I've got one resolution presented, 25-132. It's authorization to hire two firefighters. It's discussed at the previous meeting on the Act One. This is the two positions.
Questions? I'll offer a Resolution 25132 to hire two firefighters, paramedics.
A second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson White? Yes. Ms. Mahoney? Yes. And then next we've got from Oliver, a brief presentation on the road department facility.
Good afternoon, trustees, postal officers.
Hi, Oliver.
You have a presentation. Thank you, Sam. So this is a presentation, statute court on the road service department facility that's planned for construction on Silver Road. Just a reminder as background, this is an item that has been in consideration at trustees, the road department for many years. Dialogue was started in 2023 with Lucas County regarding the Silver Road site. Purchase agreement was signed in summer of 2023 and due diligence completed by the man who spent through. The town closed on the property in August of 2024. The purchase price was just under $18,000 and they were given location. I very appreciate that part of the process. Through the process, the bureau group was selected for design engineering and so their services includes design work, development, the preparation of construction documents, bidding, private construction, and private construction. So this is an existing timeline. It's a little flexible, but it's generally safe on course. The current point of reference may be a little difficult to see, but it's item 24, which is the owner review and approval. So that is targeted for September, but of course before giving any approvals on the concepts and designs, want to make sure that the board had the opportunity to weigh as much as possible. The construction itself would be targeted for March of 2026 through June 2027 with the project flowing into private closeout in 2020. And then I'll turn it over to Ken Bier at this point. Do you go over the asset premenance and our side letter?
Ken, if you would be so kind, just introduce yourself and address and all that for the tape if you could.
Ken Bier, architect, registered architect, and professional engineer with Bier Group Architecture Inc. in Long Beach, Ohio. Our office is located 314 Rice Street. So we've developed, we started developing a program, started that process as May, worked through the May, June, July program and then developing a concept to make design for the facility. And designing today is an evolutionary process. You present something, people react to it, and then adjustments are made. And so we've got some of that process and then we have a year or two, but we have a year or two, so that's part of the day is to present this and get feedback either today or in the coming days, weeks. So this would be the front elevation facing towards Silver Road. We're looking to use a major material consistent with other public buildings here in township. And then put the accent there. So the front there, we have some brick type material. Then we have some stone valve coasting there. And then there's a part that sets back a little bit where we're just kind of the break lanes code on that part of the office and then back out to the truck storage part with the insulated valve panels above. We've got that elevation. But this would be looking at it from the southwest. And so we're trying to keep the nicest looking portion of the building facing Silver Road, but the ability to some other we totally build in. So we're trying to check any overhead doors. Which is that overhead door to the far, if you're looking at it to the far, as I'm looking at it to the far right, this is your far right too. And then the next overhead door, that's a drive through bay for fire trucks, maintenance for longer vehicles. Go to the next slide. This is back in the yard now. There'd be a fence all around the yard with an operable gate for security. And that's looking at the, from the east-west direction. This is looking from the south side. And you can see on the right-hand side, the overhead doors, the wash bay there and then the rest of the maintenance bay doors. On the straight view, this is a 3500 ton solid storage structure that's at the far north end of the property. And then on the right-hand side is a various service equipment in the south end. It's not really a medical storage, but like street paper, things like that. And that's just an elevation looking from the northeast of the service. You can see, so there's a fuel tank there for vehicle fuel that has both lighted and diesel. And this is from the south, up in the north, Silver Road looking at the facility. As proposed, there are the drive entrance to have a digital sign there. Next. And looking at this from a site plan standpoint, we have the drive entrance at the north. We did meet with the county engineer's office a couple, about six weeks ago to review the site plan. And we're also showing on this, so we have a digital site plan approval of the county engineer's office, a future drive entrance on the south that will go just into the yard. It's at that dash line there. And here in the future, this is the main, this is the parking lot in the front, the office area, truck storage, service bays, the long drive through bay, the wash bay, the accessory like sign shop, fuel island, salt storage, the detention pod that's proposed to be on the north. And then this is the canning station, which is used for dumping the street sweep route after this time, sweeping it for bag trucks. Next slide. Oh, the building is, the main building is roughly 41,000 square foot in size, including the office area, and the accessory building is over 10,000 square foot in size. The main building would have full fire suppression. The accessory building would be heated, but would have fire suppression. That site's building is required. We have a firewall that separates the sign shop from the, which could have a vehicle parked in it from the rest of the accessory building. And then one of the companies that we've worked with for about 10 years, and we've designed a number of facilities similar to this for private transportation, but it's construction support solutions and they've worked with us on developing estimates. So this is an estimate on the, on this concept. And they, early in the stages of design, if you go to the next slide, they do put some contingencies. So some of the contingencies will go away as we get further in design. There'd be three levels of estimating. This is schematic design estimate, the design development, and then final one, construction documents, which is being used for advertising, for advertising, that'd be a public table estimate published yesterday. So you want to take over?
Sure. Thanks. Any questions? We put the next steps, know that Pramash is working with the Bureau to refine project elements. So there are certain purchases that can be done in-house to help conserve the budget and reduce the overall product number. I think as Mr. Bier mentioned, as you go through the next couple of phases of estimating, those figures will be reflected, those changes will be reflected. So currently moving through the owner review and the Google process, there will be a second phase prior to the submission to those ten years and after the submission to Lucas County Engineers, the development, construction documents, and then in the fourth quarter of this year, October, November, December, submission of the plan for approval with the bidding anticipated for the first quarter of 2026 and construction tentatively starting toward the second quarter of 2026. Next slide. So in terms of project financing, this is occurring on the federal track that the project is being developed and the elements are being refined. Of course, project financing is contingent on review and approval of the total project scope. This would be funded through issuance of bonds. Those issuance amount would be verified in December is when we anticipate the authorizing resolution coming in front of the trustees. The plan is to use Satina and Associates as the financial advisor, and Squire Patton Boggs as the bond counsel. They've been involved with township financing projects for most recently refunding the fire department's bonds. So that authorizing resolution come in front of the trustees. We talked this morning, likely the second meeting in December, possibly the first quarter in 2026. As part of the process, the township would obtain an updated bond rating for the township. We believe the last time it was issued was around 2015, 2016 by state reports. And there may be a statute or a random period that follows the adoption of the authorizing resolution. And there would be a period of time when the project bids are received and opens and the bonds will be priced out into the market. And then there would be an overlap of time where the postal officer could certify the availability of funds. And we know for sure that we could have bond funds coming in for the township to enter into their construction contract. So that would all be tied together first quarter of next year. So this is an analysis from financial advisor plans. This is the coverage analysis and essentially shows a couple of scenarios first. If there is a $12 million bond issuance, the second is if there was a $14 million bond issuance using a current market rate of 4.7%. The coverage analysis shows that 98%, if it was a $12 million issuance, 98% of the annual debt service would be covered by the recent increase in 2.3% road service mills. If it were a $14 million project, then it would be 83% of the annual debt service cost would be covered through recent evaluation. There's a couple of differentiating figures there. So if it's $12 million issuance, that would be beyond the devaluation, the additional income would be actually $19,000 per year. For a $14 million issuance, it would be just about $150,000. As the project goes on and the construction costs or declines, we'll have information that's consistently updated, but both of those could be able to be built into existence at this time.
How long is the bond for?
Thirty years.
Fixed rate?
Fixed rate. And they did, they did discuss that as the year goes on, perhaps there will be a decrease or two in the interest rate, which of course is definitely something.
Could we get information on your past projects with ODOT you mentioned and the cost of those buildings and maybe the projected cost and the actual cost? So we kind of have an idea of how these run in terms of?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And has anybody reached out to the city of Sylvania to see if they were interested in any joint cooperative things? I got to believe that's a nice property off of Haroon there that they might want to vacate and sell and, you know, if we could expand this to include both road departments or something, it might make it a little bit more palatable than spending $16 million on our road department. Not that it doesn't need it, but just looking for ways we could share expenses and keep our costs in line.
There was discussion earlier in the year with the city about this site. And I think from a space standpoint, and it's something that we evaluated, we didn't know if the current Silver Road site could support the operations of both and hold the space for the potential of maybe having an backup for leaf pickup and leaf turning at the Silver site. The Haroon site is not something that we talked about, but we have a meeting upcoming on Friday with Joe Shaw. I'd be glad to just have some discussion with him about the site.
41,000 feet sounds like a lot of square footage for office space. Did I hear that right?
No, no, it's a whole building.
Okay, thanks, Ken.
The whole building is truck storage and office space that can be moved in, around about 4,000 square feet. Yeah, I think if you put in the maintenance space, the service space, yeah, office is 5,170 square feet.
Got it. What do we have here? Do we know what we have here?
I don't know. I don't, rather than you're aware, I could figure it out.
Not sorry.
That also includes all facility bathrooms, break rooms.
Your private restroom and.
No private restroom. It does include additional female bathrooms, which we don't have now, and an additional reception area that obviously we don't have. The office spaces, there are three annual office rooms, and I think those are fairly reasonably sized for what we need.
So we'll get back, we'll chill on this and get back here. Is that what you'd like us to do?
Yeah, absolutely. You're welcome to any information that's presented or any other.
I know I got some questions I'll call you about these payments and all that. I'd like to get a little more handle on that.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, this went on to say, as we move forward with designing, certainly something input that I see is would be the first responders review preference for where the fire department connections are, or higher urgency.
That's good.
Thank you. So those things have to take.
Okay. All right. Anything else for the board? Well, thanks for coming tonight, Ken. Oliver, thank you for the breakdown.
Thank you.
You want to go ahead and move on to the next 21, 25, 148?
Sure. Resolution 25148 would be a resolution to approve amendments to the regional combined health district merger agreement handed to the board representatives. The Lucas County Health Department has currently entered into a purchase agreement for the Dyce's building in Stillish. Health Department has proposed updates to the existing merger agreement for both the term, which ties financing of their billing purchase, as well as to reflect changes in kind services that they've structured with the city of Sylvania. As the board is aware, the township is a member of the district advisory council and township has been requested to approve of the proposed amendments and appoint a representative to vote on matter at the district advisory council. The current township contribution, the apportionment for the health department is approximately $275,000 per year. The additional cost for each year for five years with the property purchase is estimated just over $8,500. I'd like to answer any questions before we head.
If there's no questions, I'll offer a resolution.
So our contribution to the Lucas County Health Department is going up by 85 grand a year?
Correct. There would be 85,500 each year for total finance in relation to property purchase.
And that's just for the new property purchase and the expanded services that they're going I'd like to hold off on this one, to be honest, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we could certainly, if there are follow-up questions, direct them to the health department or invite the health department director to speak to the board. This is the extent of the information I have. I did tour the building, but outside of that experience, certainly didn't get answered any follow-ups.
Great, we'll table it.
The last item under administrative is Resolution 25151, the resolution according to the township representative to the special energy treatment district. Currently, John Burrell is serving as the appointee and he would be willing to serve again, but I don't think his feelings would be hurt if somebody else were to be selected. This would be for a two-year period, beginning on November 1st, 2025, through the end of
Did we skip the hiring of the zoning and planning?
That's put on hold.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions on John Burrell being the representative? I mean, what is it? I mean, it's not, it's very little time on it, right?
My understanding is maybe three or four times a year, they discuss any case, energy improvements that may come in front of the township or any other one of them, and talk about the structure of those energy improvement savings and how they finance.
Any questions by the board on that one?
No.
I'll, I guess I'll propose if JB wants to do it, well, Kevin, keep doing it unless you guys want to have somebody else.
That's good.
I'll offer Resolution 25151 for the representative of the special improvement district.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Jenna White?
Yes.
Ms. Mahoney?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Oliver. Emron or Dave?
Yeah. We have one resolution, 25-150, and it's a transfer appropriations within the general fund, and it's to pay $500 for advertising in the chamber for the township.
Any questions on that, guys and girls? I'll offer Resolution 25150, transfer appropriations.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Jenna White?
Yes.
Ms. Mahoney?
Yes.
All right.
And we have nothing in the non-agenda items signed in. Any open discussion reports by the board?
I just wanted to report that I did attend the grand opening for the all-inclusive playground at Stranaham.
Oh, nice.
And it is an awesome asset for the school district, for this community. It was, it was very, as you would expect, well-received, and it's a phenomenal project.
I heard it was vandalized and parts were stolen.
Already?
Yes.
Prior to the grand opening.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
Okay. That's terrible.
Yeah, hopefully they would get some, like, cameras up there, you know, from a couple different directions to try to, if that happens. That's horrible.
Yeah. I didn't hear about that till after the grand, but it did happen before the grand opening, apparently. But yeah, it's, it's very nice.
Thanks for going. All right, at this time, we'll move for adjournment at 5:32.
Okay.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Jenna White?
Yes.
Ms. Mahoney?
Yes. All righty. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.